Could you lead us in the pledge and I'll remind everyone to go on mute so we can follow it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. Next item of business is roll calls. Cecilia, could you call the roll for us, please?
Yes, certainly. All right, we have the Chair, Jim Ruland.
Here.
Vice Chair, Michael Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Don Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Bart Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Chris Kaczynski.
Here.
And the Chair pro tem, Commissioner Zen Wu.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item four, special orders of business, we have none. Item five, we have minutes. And we have one set of minutes from the regular planning commission meeting of May 19th. Are there any requests for changes or motions? A move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Brown, second by Kaczynski, and I will call the roll. Commissioner Brown. All right. Commissioner Crandall.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Aye.
And Ruland votes aye, passes unanimously. Item six, oral and written communications. Members of Republic may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the planning commission electronically. Material may be emailed to www.sand-clemente.org/pcpubliccomment. Transmitted by 3:00 PM on planning commission meeting days is recommended. The planning commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Cecilia, do we have any communications about something that's anything that's not on the agenda?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Item seven is the consent calendar. We have nothing on the consent calendar. So item eight is our public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And today we have 610 Camino de los Marias Amendment to Site Plan Permit 19-203. And Jonathan is back with us today to discuss this one. So Jonathan, the floor is yours.
Evening Chair Ruland and Commissioners. It is good to be back. Thank you for the time and opportunity to present this requested amendment. I do have a presentation available just to help us visually walk through the information here. And so I'm going to request that IT go ahead and pull that up and we'll work through that. And while they're pulling that up, I do want to just provide a quick introduction to the two representatives from the applicant team today. So the applicant from this project that I'm sure you're familiar with is Bricksmore. And we have both Kyle Gadat and Andrew Bracy on with us representing Bricksmore, the owners of this property. So Plaza by the Sea first came before the planning commission a year ago in May of 2020. And the commission approved site plan permit 19-203 along with a couple of other entitlements, including an architectural permit. Next slide, please. And so this just gives the quick background of that process and some additional information. So the site, of course, is at 610 through 628 Camino de los Marias, commonly known as the Stater Brothers Center. And the site is zoned as community commercial four and is within the Camino de los Marias focus area. The applicants did submit construction plans, but then did return to design review to review a revised connection plan in January of this year, which was approved by the designer review subcommittee. After that time, they returned to the city with those revised plans, which were approved by planning and building. Next slide, please. I'll go through these next couple pretty quickly because they just refer back to that text information we just talked through. But this is the pad building, the out parcel building at the plaza that was proposed to be demolished and rebuilt anew. And again, as we discussed, that was reviewed in May of last year. And if we can go to the next slide, you'll see the proposed rendering that the planning commission reviewed and approved at that meeting. Next slide, please. And then in January of this year, this slide shows that modified connection plan that focused on some changes to walkways to improve the pedestrian environment in this space. Unfortunately, as the applicant submitted and had these plans approved, they were contacted by one of their tenants, and we're going to move to the next slide to talk through that element. And within the lease that was taken on by Bricksmore as the new owners of the property, an existing lease that they inherited, the market tenant has equal say in changes to common areas. And the documents essentially refer to everything outside of building footprints as common areas. The market tenant, Stater Brothers, did protest that wall removal. And this discussion eventually elevated to legal discussions between Bricksmore and Stater Corporate to discuss that piece. Bricksmore Legal ultimately concluded that Stater's lease does afford them the veto power over changes in the common areas. And Bricksmore was unsuccessful in persuading Stater to support the wall removal, which has already been approved by city building and planning. I did review those lease documents with Bricksmore to validate that terminology. Understandably, they didn't want to have the private lease document be something that was subject to public record searches. But I was able to to review those documents to validate. If we go to the next slide. So because of that loggerhead, Bricksmore is now requesting to strike condition of approval 7.17 from the prior approved resolution from May of 2020. Work on site has been voluntarily paused to resolve this issue. As I mentioned, permits are ready to go and the demolition process was about ready to commence at that out parcel building. But Bricksmore pushed pause, recognizing that they, you know, were in a position that they may not be able to honor this condition of approval and came to the city to address that proactively. Staff in Bricksmore do prefer that connection plan that was reviewed in January of 2021. However, staff does support striking the condition in order to facilitate the demo and replacement of the Baker Square Building. I'll allow Bricksmore to speak more to this, but new tenants have already signed leases. And so those tenants are essentially just waiting for the construction of that building to to commence and be completed in order to move in. Next slide. It's going to just be the conclusion concluding recommendation. So determine that the project be found categorically exempt from CEQA guidelines, section 15301 for existing facilities. And then approve resolution 21009, which strikes condition of approval 7.17 from resolution PC 20-008. So that concludes the presentation. And my next slide is simply questions and discussion. So I'm available for questions as are the applicants. And I imagine that they may be the focus of these questions. So I will end my presentation there and return it to you Chair Ruland. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And maybe before I ask for questions, since I agree, perhaps the applicant has something they want to add. So let me ask the people representing Bricksmore, is there anything that you'd like to add to what Jonathan put in before we get to our Q and A?
No, I think Jonathan did a very, very good job of summarizing. Just to add that on our leases, almost, you know, on all of our tenant leases, there are requirements to, if we do have common area changes, that we get the tenant's consents. So we were, you know, we should have probably more proactively looked at that before we got too far down the path of trying to remove the wall. And but we were here and tenants do require us to go to and contact them for for consent. And at this point, we do not have consent to make that change. So that's why we proactively went to Jonathan and wanted to move forward to get that condition struck before getting to the end and getting the building built, getting our final sign offs. And this condition coming up as a requirement before we could get a C of O, you know, for our tenants. We do have the building is pre leased at this point. And so we do have some timeframes here where we need to meet to, you know, keep us from being in default of delivery. So we're anxious to to get it moving, get that old building torn down and add to everything that we've done there today. As you guys probably have seen, we did a significant, you know, facade upgrade to the to the center. So we're excited to get this this building done, but right now we we don't have a approval to remove the wall.
Okay, thank you. So yes.
Hi, Jim. If you're going to start selecting from Commissioner comments, if I may be the first to comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, I can appreciate this and I wanted I wanted to be first because it's really all my fault. I'm the one that brought up that possibility of opening that up in the first place. And though I see a greater public benefit to having that open, I do, and I think it's thoroughly arguable that there would be a relief to traffic and impacts traffic in the community by opening that up just based on sheer volume alone. Both centers and the center in question are becoming more and more popular. There's lots of lots of use, lots of usage there. So I'm happy to see that. But for the reasons that the applicant has has raised, I I just wanted to say that before we get into discussion on it, that taking a closer look at this and I don't see a problem with it. I did go out and spend time there and I spoke to some of the.
So Michael, we haven't quite gotten into discussion yet. Do you have a question for staff or the applicant?
I do. I'm trying to trying to prime that that question for for staff and or the applicant. And I've said enough, but I can ask the applicant or staff this question. And that is, is there any reason why we would, other than just relief of traffic, not remove that wall? Is there any reason other than, you know, the leasing component that would be a problem if we kept kept the wall in? Would there be any negative impact to either center if we just left it in? Maybe that's more for Jonathan to respond to.
I'll respond to that. So, you know, within the staff report, when I get down to the CEQA section, you know, that's an easy finding for us to make in this instance because it's an existing condition. So, you know, striking the condition does not create any new, there's no new development that would cause any impacts. You know, we recommended that that wall be considered for removal along the way because we recognize primarily that there's some congestion on the other plaza and that removal of this wall could create a relief valve, whether that was, you know, pedestrian traffic or vehicular, that really either of those added options would provide just another way for people to get to and from the plaza. And, you know, traffic engineers, when they reviewed the proposal, were supportive, even though it would add some congestion in that center access between the two plazas because they thought that it could reduce the number of people who exit on Camino de los Marias and take the short 50-foot journey up the road to turn into the other plaza. You know, so for those reasons, we were we're supportive of the removal. That being said, leaving the wall in place does not create any.
Okay, that's good to know. And Jonathan, one of the more successful uses in the adjacent center is the Trader Joe's facility. And I went over there on three different occasions to, well, to shop personally, you know, personal use, but also to take some time to just check out circulation, traffic flows, as well as the staging that occurs for their loading. And they're apparently very busy. And there's a lot of activity back there. And one thing that I didn't notice this first time around, because I didn't take the time to really focus just on that, was that there's quite a bit of activity back there. And if we opened up that wall, that would this, that would severely impact that that use in their operations. So I don't want to, you know, delve into what's permitted there, what they're allowed to do, not allowed to do, what the city's approved. Just I'm assuming everything has been approved there and it's operating as as intended. But I can imagine a significant impact to that use by removing that wall.
Commissioner Brown, oh, I'm sorry. Still talking?
I was just just asking if Jonathan would agree that there would be a negative impact to Trader Joe's, potentially.
That's, you know, we recognize that there potentially could be. And so the intent was with Bricksmore to look at, you know, isolating the the loading areas with Trader Joe's. They had had some of those preliminary conversations with Trader Joe's management. So, you know, we weren't moving forward blindly, but we did recognize that that, yes, there would be some operational hurdles that had would have to be addressed with wall removal.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. That's all I have, Jim. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I posed a question to you, I guess, last week. Jonathan, you were on vacation. Maybe I don't have to come back and pick up on it. Basically, essentially, is via Bricksmore to the applicant or the obstruction of the applicant's original desire, do they offer, they're, I guess, afraid of leakage to the other center, do they offer any data to support that?
I'm going to go ahead and.
Do the brothers offer any data to prove that they would lose track, lose business by opening the wall?
So on that question about whether Stater offered data to to validate their claims of lead, I'm going to defer to Kyle and Drew, who have had more direct conversations with Stater on that topic. So if if one of you gentlemen could field that question, please.
Sure. You know, the, as as Michael had mentioned, you know, the the centers are both, you know, very active. And so we do have, we do have, you know, we're going to be full from occupancy standpoint here. And so I think the the concern is that, you know, they just, there's, why take, you know, there's additional potential more traffic that could could come through there. But but to answer your your question, there was no data that I'm aware of other than them just being in that center for the last 45 years or so and and, you know, how they've been operating successfully. So.
And just to add that, and just to add that, the the legal documents don't require that they that they show leakage or anything like that. They they, it's straightforward that they have the ability to to approve or disapprove. And and they're using that as leverage.
Okay, just for the record, I think as you bought that shopping center, I know we approved some stuff when you did the facade change and courses. The current restaurant thing that's ready to launch. There were some pertinent, there were parking waivers required to make all that fit. So they're overparked right now. Is the app, is Stater Brothers aware of that? You're in a choke point as it is, and opening that wall is actually going to alleviate the situation in that center. Did you make them aware of it?
Make them aware of the of the parking variance we have?
Right.
No.
They're not aware that they're, that part of the center is overparked as it is and it's going to get worse when you build it. The restaurant drive-through, which they have approved, because they have. Because we, as I recall, there were parking waivers based on the type of counts in that center to make everything fit. And so this opening the wall is going to alleviate that condition. So. You didn't make them aware of it.
The parking analysis was done for this, for that, for Plaza by the Sea and did not contemplate the wall removal at any point. And it was done, that parking analysis was done in 2018 and and was not, did not consider that wall removal at any point.
Are there any parking waivers unaffected now with the new restaurants going?
The the parking condition that we have on the site now is, Jonathan, help me, it's it's based on the the central business district parking?
Oh, the way that that was managed at the time was through a shared parking. So it was a use permit that contemplated the shared parking within the shopping center. So it assigned the, I'll correct on that, the parking ratios that we commonly use in the downtown area where people may are or are more likely to park one time and visit more than one place. So in this instance, for instance, you have the ability to park and go into Stater Brothers and also go to Rose's Donuts. And that is a common occurrence. And so when that hearing occurred, they were granted a shared parking agreement for that center. It did not contemplate, like, at that point, the wall removal was not a part of that hearing discussion. To reframe, though, Commissioner Brown's question, please correct me if I'm wrong. But Kyle, I do believe that you or Bricksmore generally, you know, have made efforts to convince the tenant to allow for this. And amongst that would be those, you know, the topic that by opening that wall, everyone is now able to use a larger pool of parking. That was one piece that my understanding is that you've had those types of discussions with them.
Yeah, yeah, we've characterized this as a as a positive benefit for both centers. But they, they, the the legal documents are are what they are and they're clear. They're legacy documents from the 70s, you know, and so we we just have to abide by them. And one more note on the on the parking arrangement, we did, when we did that study and and obtained the the shared parking agreement, we we contemplated exactly what we are doing now with this food use in the new building. So the parking condition is consistent with what we got approved in 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yeah, this is for basically Jonathan and Malin, that is still involved too. Right now, we're just pulling the condition of approval out with no comment to the fact that they are entitled right now to build that ramp. So I think that there's got to be some kind of wording that says if we pull the condition of approval, that we've got to have drawings indicate they're not going to build that since they've already gotten, I think, site plan approval, et cetera. My question is for the applicants and maybe even Mal. Is there any way, since you have your entitlements already through the planning commission and you've got this resolution, if we could carve out the ramp and that condition as a phase two, a separate phase, which would be permitted separately for construction documents, would that allow you to save your entitlements and give you the more time to convince possibly Stater Brothers to buy off on it? And commence construction like you choose to on the drive-through building?
Only if the, we could obtain occupancy for the drive-through building that wouldn't be conditioned on removing the wall.
Well, since this would be, yes, I think that's a possibility. And that way, if you can convince Stater Brothers, you don't have to go through this whole entitlement process then.
Yeah, we we're in favor of removing it. We want to, we would, but as as long as we're not obligated as a condition to to obtain occupancy for that building, then then I'll defer to Jonathan to how that would be administered.
I was thinking that if we make the condition only apply to the ramp only. Worded so it specifically says only the ramp in that area. It doesn't affect any of the other permits, et cetera. And if it's called additional zone, additional phase, it basically would go on the back burners on ice for as long as the term of the condition of approval, the what do we have? Condition of approval and site plan permit. And I don't know, Mal thinks, is that a possibility now to do something like that? I'm just saying, can the city craft it that way, maybe?
Yeah, so there's no reason legally that you can't do it. It's really more of a practical procedural question for Jonathan. There's, there's no legal impediment to it. It's just, again, practically, can can Jonathan's planning team make that happen? So I'll just defer to him on that.
My comment on that would be that, you know, the request to to remove condition 7.17 would not preclude what you're envisioning, Commissioner Crandall, of allowing for that to come back and change in the future. And I think that they could come back and remove that wall without procuring new entitlements because that's something that was clearly contemplated by the planning commission already. The issue with them right now is that as the language reads in the condition, the wall removal is is a required component of this project. And and so removing that condition would not change their ability to to remove that wall in the future. Or if if they came back in six months and said, we were successfully able to negotiate something with Stater Brothers, Stater came to us and asked for us to update this element. And then we, you know, brought, used that as an opportunity to negotiate with them to remove the wall in six months. Then that is something that has, that can fall under the existing entitlements. This resolution would not reverse the prior resolution. It would simply remove the component of requiring that wall removal as a part of the overall project.
Yeah, obligation, yeah.
Right.
So if I could just interject here, so Commissioner Crandall, are you suggesting perhaps a some, a condition that wouldn't require the the removal of it? But if a, something like if the connection were to or if the if there were some, if the connection between the two properties were to be removed, a site, a site plan or site plan review would be required or something like that that states that if a connection is to be built between the two properties, an updated site plan for city planner approval is required.
We don't need, we don't need an additional site plan because it's already approved with the ramp.
Okay.
So what I was trying to do is, well, if we craft it in such a way that the ramp now is taken out and put aside with the condition of approval that required the shared parking agreement, then they could go ahead with their drive-through. They could do all the work they want, but they wouldn't have to come back if they can, if they can solve the problem of getting Stater Brothers to sign off on it. And if they get that, they can move on to a phase two. It's just, I'm trying to work with the applicant here to give them an option that doesn't mean you lose all the entitlements and have to start from scratch if you want.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Certainly appreciate what you're suggesting.
So that was a question. We can get on to discussion after that, but I think maybe we'll all mill it over a little bit and talk about it again in discussion.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Kaczynski, questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Jonathan. Currently, that wall exists there. And have you been by that spot lately, Jonathan?
I've been, yes.
Yeah. So on one side, on the magic flooring side, you have a stack of pallets typically. Is that correct? And then on the other side, typically you have four or five dumpsters. Is that correct?
So those have not always been there. And I, you know, see if I can get Kyle to comment on that. Because I did notice those, the row of dumpsters recently. And my, what I imagine is that that is some residual from the construction. uh what I imagine is that that is some residual from the construction activities that occurred on site. Because they do have a trash enclosure over there, but I did notice that some of those uh dumpsters were outside of that enclosure. Would be a code compliance issue, but I believe that that's a temporary situation. I would defer to Kyle to uh explain.
Yeah, we have a, we have a trash enclosure there that the trash hauler rolls them out and doesn't always do a good job of rolling them back in. Uh so sometimes we have to do that. And on the other side, there are pallets from Trader Joe's.
I'm only asking because uh there's a a lot of uh new landscaping area proposed. Is that still going in?
So what is proposed, I contacted our uh consulting landscape architect, Pat Murphy, and he reached out and had some preliminary discussions um with the landscape architect Bricks Moore had contracted with. Um and the the proposal with the wall remaining in place um is to add about two feet uh of a planter box in front of that wall um as an option to soften that area. So as we, you know, I had looked at that connection plan, um there were uh, you know, land or uh paper improvements, other aesthetic improvements. And you know, my request was that Bricks Moore uh look in a way if the wall is to remove or is to be sorry, if the wall is to remain, that they look at options to soften that. Pat Murphy recommended installing a planter box no less than eighteen inches in depth off of that wall um to install vines, etc., uh to to soften that end area.
So the garbage uh, the garbage area is still going to be removed, right? And those two stalls are still going to be put in?
So no, it would no longer be removed. That uh trash enclosure location would now stay in place because the proposal that was reviewed in January relocated that trash enclosure behind the Chase Building at the other plaza. And so traps would have been walked from the restaurant to the other plaza's adjacent uh trash enclosure area uh with the wall being cut off there. That's no longer feasible. So the trash enclosure would remain in place.
Okay, and I did notice that trash enclosure only holds two of those large dumpsters. There were like four or five of them there. So just, you know, I I don't know how much you can soften it when they're just uh lining up the dumpsters against the wall.
Yes, Jonathan, Jonathan brought that up to us. We're working operationally to to fix that.
That's all I have.
Um Commissioner Woo?
Yes, um just question for the applicant. Did you try to um explore the idea of a pedestrian connection with the with the tenant?
We did.
We did.
What was the outcome?
Uh they rejected uh they rejected that as well.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have.
Okay, um Jonathan, I I I wanted to get a little clarity too on kind of the timeline for this because I know this is, I'm sure the applicant feels more than us. This is, I think it's been a long process. Um last May, so a year ago, we approved this specific condition with the wall, and it was related to the work, you know, it was done as part of the work done in the other building. But we had another CUP before that that covered a lot of the facade improvements. Am I correct about that? That's my recollection. We had like a couple of CUPs with this, correct?
So, correct. There was a a series. So the uh step one involved a minor architectural uh permit that uh involved only facade updates. No added area, no uh no added floor area to any of the existing buildings. Um and the um use permit related to the shared parking was reviewed uh at that time as well. Step two was last year when they came back with a proposal for the drive-through pad building. And any new buildings, as you're uh familiar with, uh do require a site plan permit. Um and so even some of the discussions in the first round with the minor architectural permit, um we contemplated some larger update to the site such as landscaping. Uh those were deferred until we processed site plan permit and architectural permit for the new building. Uh and that's a part of what has been submitted. Um so that covers a variety of site improvements, um in- including new landscaping in the parking lot areas, uh etc., as well as, of course, the new drive-through building. Um and then after that point, we've reviewed the two, initially a minor amendment to look at modifying that connection space. But now what we would call a significant amendment uh to remove that connection. Um and so that's where we are today.
Okay, good. Um and i- if I can ask um the applicants, can you give us an idea, if possible, of when you first learned that this was going to be an issue for your tenant? Um I assumed it's sometime in the last couple of months, given the various approvals that have gone on. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um and i- it sounds like there's already progress been made with the CUP, that that the CUP is in the middle of being uh uh built right now, right? So about, are we halfway into that, three quarters of the way into that? Do roughly, do we have a sense?
Are you referring to the construction?
Yeah, the construction on the CP, sorry.
Yeah, no, we are um, we're currently, we we put it on hold as Jonathan mentioned, um based on making sure we could get this condition re- removed prior to commencing demolition. So we're ready to start contractor. We put him on hold. He was actually mobilizing. You know, we pulled him off on Friday. He was mobilizing that next Monday. But um, yeah, we're we're ready to, as soon as we get this uh hopefully at the conclusion of this, we have that condition removed, we'll be, we'll be commencing construction next, next week.
We actually, we actually tentatively planned for Monday, provided things go well this evening.
So so you haven't started construction on the CUP then?
When you say, when you say CUP, I I wasn't sure what you meant by that.
I'm sorry, the building permits based on this that that you got with the CUP.
Okay, got it, got it.
You've pulled the building permits, but you haven't started construction. Do I have that right?
That's right. On the building, we have not. The the permits are ready to issue.
Okay, great.
Um and I think those are all my questions. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Um uh Commissioner Brown?
Just one statement, uh when we vote on things, the planning commission's ruling isn't really final until the plant, the city council approves our our minutes. So they could pull our minutes in about two weeks and reject all this stuff. And uh you might be out on the limb a little bit going forward on the demonstration plan. So there is a process that goes forward, just that the city council can always uh pull our minutes and put it into debate and discuss those issues. And that's happened before. It may not happen this time, but it will come out in.
All right, well, let's, let's go ahead and move on to the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing. And I didn't see anything in the emails. Um Jonathan or Cecilia, do we have any public comment on this issue?
I have not.
Sorry, pardon me.
I have not received any. Thank you.
Okay, so no public comment?
No, as of six P M, no.
Good, then I will close public comment and I'll open it up to planning commission discussion. Um Commissioner Blackwell, your mute's off?
Yes, thanks, Jim. I I did have a just qualifying question uh for the applicant, but I I think it'd be just as effective uh to bring it up in this discussion. I thought I heard the applicant say that uh that there was discussion with the tenant about opening up uh the wall, at least for public access, and that was also rejected uh entirely. It, do I have a consensus on that? Is that what the rest of the commission heard?
We we offered pedestrian access and that was rejected.
Okay, okay. Um, thank you. So I guess my thoughts are that to Commissioner Brown's point uh and to tie into Commissioner Woo's uh question, um I I think, you know, we we reviewed this project in its entirety in pieces. And I'm very uncomfortable with doing that because it's kind of like, you know, there's, there's, you know, creeping in of new situations and it's parcellized and it's hard to really envision the entire project and address the entire project when we're considering, you know, the demolition of of one restaurant and the building of a new building and then another use and then so it got very complicated. And we made some exceptions. This this very commission made exceptions uh for the applicant. Um uh there was a minimized aesthetic uh package presented that, you know, with some concession and some special conditions was considered um uh, you know, approvable by this commission, and it was. And and now we're looking back at a big part of of the package, and that said, uh that that uh transition point uh among properties. And to to Commissioner Kaczynski's uh comment, there was, there was also a landscape component, which was also a big part of this. And so we were hoping for some beautifications, some improved uh access, uh some reductions in impact on our streets. And now we're, you know, we're being, you know, we're being subject to this, this issue between the tenant and and the property owner that really could have been resolved through that uh process that's available to the applicant, you know, through the appeal process. And nothing was said until now. Uh you know, my first reaction is, well, it's not really our problem. You know, we're in this for for the public uh benefit. Uh you know, this project is not an island. It's part of our community, and we looked at it as a whole, to the greatest extent we could. And, you know, we made, we made these findings. We went on in discussion about this access. And, you know, we're all here for that purpose, and that's to bring the best project possible to our community. And we all agreed and was approved as such. So now we're faced with this issue that, again, is between the tenant and the landlord. Um and we're being asked for some relief. The first thing I think about is, well, what would be a happy medium? Well, it'd certainly be cleaning up the site uh like immediately, you know, clean up those those trash cans that are truly an eyesore, which was part of the purpose of removing that wall too. There was maybe a smaller component, but it was to, you know, make the both properties more attractive, you know, rather than seeing that wall there. And it's become a a stacking area for pallets on the other side, and it's become a a collection area for for garbage bins that really shouldn't be there. And I I believe the tenant will make every effort to to address that, you know, and has been construction, so that's okay, you know, but just, you know, just to be, you know, on 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 notice that, you know, it's certainly being noticed by those that aren't in position to talk about it now, and it's not a good thing. So what would be a happy, a happy medium here? And my first thought uh was exactly what Commissioner Woo had mentioned. You know, our our point was to open this up so folks could, you know, get to one side a little easier rather than getting in their car and driving all the way around. Yeah, so it is fifty feet, but it's more than fifty feet. It's entering into traffic. It's entering back into another center. It's backing up traffic at a light. It's 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 really a negative, though maybe minimum, it's still a negative impact. Um I think that those definitions in the agreement, uh though really not within our purview, are questionable. You know, what is common area and what isn't? Um it's a wall for key properties. And so that's something that, you know, should be considered. I would love to see a revisitation of this design. Uh pedestrian uh access would be a perfect happy medium. I mean, I think that's a reasonable request. I don't know that we could resolve it tonight. Maybe it is a condition that gets placed on a back burner, as Commissioner uh Crandall had mentioned. Maybe we take a look at this when that restaurant is developed and we look at, you know, some new map on parking. Maybe that's something we reconsider later. Um again, that's another component that hasn't come to fruition yet, you know, yet another tier of this multifaceted project. I think it's important that we exhaust all remedies, and if we can't even get that tenant who just got a brand-new facelift in a brand-new parking lot and a willing, look at this, this landlord is so willing to to bend over backwards to to accommodate them. I think it's fantastic. I think they're fortunate uh to be there. It's a great location. I think a a reasonable uh give back would be at least an improved access for for pedestrian traffic between properties. I think that's a, that's a, that's a good uh, you know, happy medium. And the landscape piece, if the commission is open to this, I would appreciate it if that piece of it could go back uh to um the DRSC for a review to make sure that it's thoroughly addressed, because we haven't had that opportunity in this public forum to do that. You know, we haven't had that discussion. That is, that final design is yet to be seen. So we don't know uh what it's going to look like. If it goes back to site plan review and is subject to final approval by the uh director of planning or uh community development, I think that would be satisfactory for me. If I could see those things happen, I'd I'd be happy uh supporting this project. That's all I have, Jim.
Okay, Commissioner Crandall?
Okay, um, you know, if if we were looking at these two pieces of property as two different owners, um it'd be a whole different discussion, and uh we got to keep that in mind, that these are two different projects. Um and we don't want to hold up construction. We got to figure out a way to work with the applicant to get the drive-through restaurant construction going, get their permit uh active. Uh they've got uh contractor apparently already geared up to commence work, and that's right now pretty rare to find one that's ready to go. So I think we need to work with them. I'm wondering, um one, I I would agree with what um Jonathan's done to keep this project going and not slow it down. The only thing that I noticed is that it doesn't say anything about carving out the other approvals for that ramp, etc. Um it's just the condition of approval that's being removed. And I keep looking at it as, if we look at uh seven seventeen, the condition that's causing the problem, and I'll need an answer from the applicant here, um if phase two, the connecting ramp between the two properties is commenced, then and only then will this condition apply. Uh Jonathan, would he be able, then if they call it phase two, if phase two is the ramp, um that this condition would only apply if they go ahead with that? Um would they be able to commence construction and um uh be released, um at least by the planning division uh to commence construction?
Oh, my recommendation, and I'd be happy if Mal wants to comment as well, would be to avoid using the terminology phase it with phases, um because I I don't want it to seem that we are permitting something in the future that hasn't been contemplated. Uh if you look at the very beginning of the resolution that this um commission has already approved, they have a three-year timeline to implement um uh the designs. And so um even separate from from calling out a a separate phase, they would still be able to come back to us within that three-year timeline um to remove that wall without needing an additional entitlement. Uh and they could submit a
But this, this um uh condition of approval would not apply that. If we just take away that condition of approval, they can go ahead with no condition of approval.
Correct, that would be, so so your interest is in keeping the condition but adding phrasing to indicate that should the wall be removed? So so I I
I'm doing that because we looked hard, long and hard at this. And uh we voted on it, we passed it. And so far, I haven't heard an argument for changing my mind and now saying, no, it's not necessary. I mean, there hasn't been an argument saying that, but um saying that it only applies if the ramp is built. I can live with that certain. Um uh does the applicant have any comment? You see what I'm trying to do? I'm I'm trying to say
Clarify that.
Faces all the time. And you wouldn't even have to, on your building permit, you wouldn't pull a permit for that ramp, etc., or the grading for it uh or demo for it uh until you would have the ability to get State of Brothers, and you'd have three years to hopefully convince them to do it.
It, we did, it actually is permitted separately. It's a separate permit altogether.
Okay.
And Bart, uh after three years, you can apply for another two-year extension, right?
You certainly can, yes. And management's change within companies might be able to convince them to go ahead with it.
And that's, that's a, we we would appreciate Uh, that's, that's, uh, we, we would appreciate that opportunity. It's just critical that, and I think we're aligned here, but I, I just think it's critical that the certificate of occupancy for the drive-through building cannot be conditioned on the, on the wall in any way.
That's why I'm, I'm taking it out. And phase two, or being permitted separately, is something that's done all the time.
Yeah, yeah, uh, understand.
But would, um, and, and, and I won't be hard-nosed about it, I'm, I'm fine, I'm saying, let's go ahead and do this, keep you moving. But, um, it seems a shame to throw away all your entitlements that you've got now when you could get four years of negotiation time to maybe convince State of Brothers to, um, uh, agree with you and let you go ahead with that phase.
Yeah, we would certainly appreciate that, Commissioner. I mean, we, you're right, we, this has been, you know, a lot of effort here, you know, a couple of years in the making. So, um, we, we would, we would be, you know, supportive of that and appreciative of that as well. It's, as Kyle said, as long as it's just not that, that, you know, that the city could come back at some point and saying, hey, you didn't remove that wall, therefore, you know, we're, we're red tagging the building or we're shutting the, we're not going to give a business license to your tenant or, you know, we're not going to allow you to operate, that's our only concern.
I, I don't, that, that's a valid concern. Um, Cecilia and, uh, Jonathan will have to actually respond to that one. How we could accommodate that so that doesn't occur.
How about Mal?
Maybe even Mal.
May I propose some language, uh, potentially with seven point one seven instead of striking? Um, and, and we can adjust the resolution accordingly if the commission's interested in this. Instead of striking, maybe add a sentence at the beginning that indicates, uh, the planning commission, uh, is supportive of removing the wall that divides Plaza by City from Ocean View Plaza. Should the applicant secure consent from their tenants then? And then continue the rest of the existing language.
I would certainly be comfortable if Mal was indicating that that's, uh, appropriate also.
That is entirely appropriate, I can, I can support that.
I would very support that.
Was there anything else, um, Bart?
Uh, no, that's, that's, um, certainly, I, I took too much.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, appreciate everybody's patience on this, uh, and I would certainly support language that, like Bart and you, Jonathan. To give the applicant time to work on this thing some more, if he chooses, but then decouple this so he can start getting, working on the, on the restaurant or two restaurants, I think it is, two, two establishments over there. They give you some time and space function. Let me state for the record, when you bought the two, uh, or, or now the State of Brothers, uh, shopping center, I probably had a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty people when they heard that. Their first question was, are you going to remove the wall? I'm sure it is. So, uh, I, this is eventually going to get out, it's been very quietly held coming through the system. And eventually, we come out of our minutes and it gets in and San Clemente times, gets a hold of it. Uh, have your marketing people with your words together saying, it's the guys over there that did it to us in your corporate type of language, because State of Brothers is going to cause, this is a small town and they're going to cause a lot of, they're causing a lot of ill will and they need to know that and they're going to know it and they're going to be told that. So you guys be ready, because you've been pretty responsible owners, I think, in developing this new addition you bought along with maintaining your, your current holdings there up there, if you had, and I applaud you for what you've done. So I'm just to let you know that from my perspective, there's going to be a community backlash, that that wall isn't being removed, because people were really interested in connectivity and going through it. And it is going to impact the spray, and it is going to impact it and it's going to impact State of Brothers, because they're going to lose business over their position. And you gotta act real innocent there, Kyle and Andrew, and just say, it's your position and, uh, make sure you guys are innocent out of the deal and not get caught in the frag pattern. But I'm supportive of, uh, the wording that Jonathan's put out. And let's get the project moving, but at the same time, decouple this condition from approving the restaurant to give you time, space. So maybe State of Brothers sees the light of day and we all get a common objective in the end. So I think it's going to improve in both shopping centers that you, as you merge them, and that's my feeling on it. Enough.
I would just like to offer that, that, that the market tenant, State of Brothers and, and Bricksmore are great partners. We have a great relationship, they're great tenants. And we, we appreciate our relationship with them and, and we'll continue to work with them, uh, towards the, the common goal.
But the point is, their relationship with our community in our town is going to take a hit based on their stand. Period. You guys need to stand away from the frag pattern on that, okay?
So, uh, I'm going to jump in here for a minute. Um, uh, I, I kind of take a contrary view to, uh, uh, Bart and Don on this. Um, I think adding that condition is not a condition. It's a, it's a desire of the planning commission and there's no, there's no teeth to it, there's no requirement to it. One thing that really disturbs me about this whole thing is I think that your tenant has had ample time to chime in on this. And now we're, I would say we're in the eleventh hour, but I think we're in the twelfth or thirteenth hour now. And now we're hearing about this and I know we were talking about this, like, I, I seem to recall like two years ago in design review, it, it came up even. And, um, they're the only people who seem to be opposed to it. But this was also an important condition in the original CUP. And it wasn't like many of the condition, it doesn't stand alone. It's part of sort of a tapestry of what we try to put together to make this happen. Uh, I would go so far as to say, if this were a brand new commercial center, we would probably be saying, we would probably condition it where you would have to connect with this other commercial center, even if it was owned by someone else, as long as they, they provided permission to it, so that there would be flow-through. You know, I, I, I've rented for a long, for many years, I used, I rented for many years of my life and I never thought I'd say this sentence, but I think the landlord's getting a raw deal here, because, because the last, you, you guys at Bricksmore, I think you're between a rock and a hard place. Um, and I see, um, you know, I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll go back and just remind ourselves, because I, this is something I always have to remind myself on, is it's not a matter of trying to get this construction done quickly. I mean, that's, that's certainly Bricksmore's issue and I appreciate that and I hate the idea of slowing them down. But we're about the findings that we have to make. And we made these findings originally. And when we make these findings, you know, we don't, when we do the conditions, we do the conditions so we can make the findings. And we don't lard up a bunch of conditions, you know, like if we need this many findings, we don't lard it up to, you know, get this many conditions that we could take one or two out and we're still okay. We try to get the conditions that just get us to the point where this can be acceptable. So now we're being asked to remove an important condition from this. And there's no solution provided in this document. And there's no, in, in, in the staff report. And there's no, uh, description, discussion in the staff report, like there usually is, about how this still fulfills the findings. There's no mapping from what we're doing to the findings. And when I go back and look at these findings, honestly, without this, I can't make any of the findings. I, you know, I, I, I'm saying, um, does it meet the general plan and the purpose and intent of the zone? Not really, not, not with the current general plan we have. You know, given how we, how we want traffic and flow and pedestrian access and convenience and aesthetics, is the site suitable for the type and intensity of development? Well, if the wall is there, I don't think it's suitable for the intensity. If there's no wall there, I think it's more suitable for the intensity. Um, is it detrimental to public health, safety, welfare? Or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity? I think of the other tenants, some of the, you know, there's donut shops and that sort of thing. It could be injurious to them if people can't, you know, easily wander through the parking lot and grab a donut after they come out of TJ's or something like that. So I, I, I won't go through all of these, but I think you get the picture. I'm, I, I'm looking at this saying, can I make the findings? And I can't, I mean, not just for one finding, I can't make them for any of the findings. And I know that if we were to remove this, there are other pieces of this puzzle that we put together originally that kind of start to fall apart a little bit, like, you know, the traffic and the flow and that sort of thing. And there's no, there's no solution to that provided. And so I have a big problem with that. Um, we're also being asked to do this with kind of a, a promise of a solution to come in the future. But that promise isn't part of the conditions. So there really is no promise to do something in the solu, in the future. Like, you know, if, if we had known this in the beginning, we might have said something like, okay, we've got to deal with traffic flow. They don't want to remove the wall, maybe we have to get rid of a curb cut or we want certain landscaping there or whatever that might be. We haven't had that discussion, we haven't considered what this project might be like, you know, if there weren't a wall there. So I, you know, I, I understand, my colleagues are all trying to get to, you know, like, uh, you know, like, uh, Michael said, like a happy medium, um, but we already got to the happy medium. That, that was the original approval. So, um, you know, and I, and I hate leaving an applicant who's dealt with us, I think, you know, very well, you know, through kind of a long process. Uh, you know, I, I, I hate to put them between a, keep them between a rock and a hard place. But again, as Michael said, this isn't so much our problem. You know, we're looking out, our job is to look out for, does this meet the general plan? Does this apply to the district? Does it, you know, is it what the citizens of San Clemente want out of this particular land use? And I think it's pretty clear, the answer's no. Anyone who's parked in Trader Joe's parking lot knows the, uh, yeah, knows that the answer is no. So, uh, you know, and it just kind of makes sense that you got two commercial centers doing much the same type of business. The fact that you can't get to one from the other and they're right next door, that, you know, from a design, from a utility, from a use perspective, that doesn't make a lot of sense. And that's one of the reasons we conditioned it that way. And it wasn't, you know, I mean, obviously the landlords agree, they were, you know, most amenable to, to, to that condition. So I, I, I know that leaves us with the risk of, uh, uh, leaving the, the landlord in a difficult situation. But it is a landlord situation, it's not our problem to solve. We solve the problem in terms of, you know, working out all the things that we had to work out to get to this point to approve the original CUP. Um, you know, and I, and I would say kind of as the last thing, I, I know that, I know the tenant is saying at this point, no, you know, I'm, I'm putting my foot down, I'm, I'm issuing my veto. But I, I would assert that they've already said yes tacitly. Um, you know, and that maybe this isn't, it just doesn't feel like it's in good faith to me. You know, uh, there's probably some legal principle that says even if you exercise it right, you have to do that with good faith. And I, I'm just seeing something that's, that, that just, it looks funny, right? And it, it, and I, you know, this could have been part of the mix a year ago. Could have been part of the mix a year and a half ago. And, um, and it wasn't. And so now I, I don't see any reason for us to change, because I don't see a solution that, no one's come to us with a solution that keeps us, uh, true to the findings and to the general plan. So, you know, I, I appreciate what my other colleagues are doing and trying to make this move forward. I appreciate the difficulty that the, that the developer is in, the landlord is in. But I, 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 I just don't see where I can support this and make those findings, so. Um, so Chris, I think you are next.
Uh, Commissioner Rullen, can I ask a, a question?
Yes, I'm sorry.
They were separate, if they were separate property owners, if we had no control over the property adjacent, we, we wouldn't be able to remove the wall.
Well, let me say two things about that. One is, there isn't a separate property owner. And if there was, we have done this sort of thing in the past, we've made a request. Can you go check with the property owner and see if they would be amenable to this or that? Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. And if that, that property owner would have, so maybe it would, that would have happened that way. But if the property owner had come back and said, no, we won't do that, you got to leave the wall there or we're going to leave our wall there, or whatever the case may be, then we would have taken that into account as we were doing the site plan. We would have been scratching our heads over, you know, that's a very bad traffic area out there, one of the worst in the city, going through that intersection and that, and the traffic going by, there's a lot of stoplights. Is there something that we have to do to alleviate that? Are there, you know, we, we would have been asking those kinds of questions and trying to work it out that way. And we, we've never done that, we've never had that opportunity, we've never had a solution provided to us that we could consider. So, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, if they were two different properties, it might be a different situation. Yes, but there would also be a different conversation that we would have had, that we didn't get to have. Uh, Commissioner Kaczynski?
Yeah, Jim, thank you. Um, I have a question for Mal. Uh, given what you said, uh, now, uh, what legal consequence or what, what legal position would the city be in if we refuse to remove this, um, seven point one seven, um, condition?
Yeah, there's, there's no consequence at all. Um, the, the, uh, the tenuous position that the landlord finds itself in vis-à-vis its tenants is not, it's not really our business, um, for better or worse. Uh, this is entirely up to the, the, the commission's discretion. And if you, if you leave it in place, there's no repercussions, you can take it out, there's no repercussions, it's, it's, uh, it's totally your call. And there's no legal danger with doing anything, uh, with seven point one seven.
Okay, and Jim, um, to find a, a happy medium or a, a some sort of a compromise, I don't know if any of the commissioners are willing to do this and I, you know, maybe take a straw vote. But instead of removing seven point one seven, we reworded, uh, assuming that we would be okay with leaving that wall there. Uh, because some of the language in there does talk about, uh, the obstructions that are clearly still there on both sides of that wall. And I don't see anything in, in these conditions that remedy that. In addition, in addition to some of the landscaping that's said that they're not going to put in now, that there's not going to be a through, um, throughway. So I don't know if any of the commissioners are willing to work on rewording seven point one seven with, with the wall there as a, as a, as an opportunity to come up with a compromise? That's a question. For Jim.
Um, if you're saying we have to rework the wall, I, I would say that at a minimum, we would have to do that. I don't think, I think that's a necessary but not sufficient thing for us to do to be able to find this. So what happens there? What is it landscaping, is it whatever it might be? I think what we also have to do is look at this in the context of the whole site plan, which is what we did at first. We have to go back and look at that as well and see how this fits in and, and ask, now that you don't have this flow-through, which, look at it this way, it's, it's a, it's a non, this is kind of a non-conforming thing. It doesn't conform to the general plan, right, in my opinion. And that's okay, they, you know, when it was built, it conformed to the general plan and over time, things get out of conformance. They don't have to change something every year just to be in conformance. But after whatever it's been, half a century or so, that, 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 that's been there, I think built in the seventies if I'm not mistaken. So after that amount of time, there are certain things that trigger the fact that you have to come into conformance. And now what conformance means is what's in our general plan, what's in our mobility, all that sort of thing. So we would have to look at that and ask ourselves, if that wall is there, how would this, you know, how, how does that affect the mobility? How does that affect the bad traffic out there? How does that affect people's ability to conveniently, you know, shop, for instance? Because if you want to go to Trader Joe's, to, um, State of Brothers, you kind of can't. You can, almost can't get there from there, you have to pull out, you have to drive a couple of miles around, on that ground. So it's, um, so yeah, those would have to be looked at, you know, and, and like a solution provided for us to, to chew on.
So at this point, we're looking at either denying or, um, maybe taking a straw vote to see if we want to amend. Is anyone up for that?
Uh, but amend, well, I, I don't think I'd be in favor of amending, because I don't know what we're amending. I don't know, we, we are not taking into the whole, we don't really have the option to take in the whole appearance. We don't have a statement from staff or investigation from staff on how it conforms to the, to the general plan and to the findings. You know, it seems like we're kind of flying by the seat of the pants.
There was a conformance with the general plan, because in the configuration, and now when we did the general plan, Jim, because we passed that in twenty fourteen.
It's, what we passed is in conformance with the general plan.
The configuration
Leaving it isn't. What's that?
The, the configuration, the two shopping centers are in now, the configuration was in when we passed the general plan in twenty fourteen.
But that doesn't mean it's in conformance, it's legal non-conformance.
I think it's legal conformance, how, how it would be known. I think it's legal component. How, how would be known?
Because it doesn't, I'd have to go relook up some of the specific areas of the general plan to give you the, the chapter verse. But all of these, you know, the, the, the policies we have for land use, for instance, talk about convenience and aesthetics. That's not an aesthetic area. It's certainly not a convenient area. It talks about mobility and multi-mo- multimodal mobility. And that, that is certainly not a, an area of mobility, especially when you've got two community commercial places sitting right next to each other that, all, except for the wall, share a parking lot. So, you know, it's, you know, and, and again, there's other things in here too, besides just strictly general plan, like how it affects other businesses in that center and the negative effect it has on those. So it's, yeah, so I, I, yeah, I, it's just, I have really have a hard time. And maybe someone will, you know, be the genius here and come up with a brainstorm that, you know, seems to really solve the problem, but I haven't heard anything that solves the problem. As close as we've come is to say, to kind of give a wish list, but there's no commitment to it. And given the desires of the tenant, I don't think that that would ever come to pass because the tenant would read it, would veto it, in my opinion.
That's future. We don't know.
Then we don't have a project at all.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, that's right. Repercussion right now is the job stops. They lose their lease on the drive-throughs. The job stops completely. Is that to the city's best interest? I don't think so.
And that's exactly, frankly, I, that what, that is what will happen. Um, we, we have, we have a committee, uh, you know, a, a committee that we answer to in the company. And with this condition, they will not let us proceed. And, and we will stop.
So that, and, and so kind of what, just to kind of be clear about what you're saying is, is where the pa- the city is the path of least resistance. The city is the pri- is the, is the, um, party that has to give. Your committee doesn't have to.
No, no, I'm not saying that.
That has to make a, has to make a compromise in the, in the, in the, in the value of this place to the community.
Wha- what I'm saying is that we have an opportunity this evening to work together that, and we've worked together over the last two years to make tremendous improvements to this center. We have an opportunity this evening to craft some language that works for both of us. If we don't do that, and we have to continue negotiating with the tenant and have internal discussions, we're not going to resolve it in a timely manner. It's going to take a lot of time.
And if we can craft that language, that is, that's great. Uh, so far, I haven't heard anything that, at least for me, satisfies, uh, satisfies me that this is going to fulfill the intent of the planning commission in approving the CUP. So far, I haven't heard anything. So, uh, so let me, well, let me.
Michael and Shannon, chance to speak and then, uh,
Yes.
We can continue.
Yes, so, um, Zen, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, lots of a good discussion. I, I, I think the applicant made an honest mistake and they caught it and they made it. And they appear to make a reasonable effort in good faith to solve that problem with the tenant and they they're not successful. Um, yes, it's not our problem, not a city's problem, but, um, so we have a approval based on the entire package. Now, the applicant come, coming back to us and wanting to pull one piece out. Uh, we can look at it two ways. The chair, as you mentioned, you know, we can, the ideal way is look at the entire package again to determine if we can still make that same findings. Um, that's going to cost, cost a lot, it takes a lot of time. So I think alternatively, I can accept another way that is given the, giving the approver to package and a giving today's request a change. Can applicant propose anything to trade off? So if, if they pull out a condition, it's going to have some negative thing based on the baseline. The new baseline is the approver package. And I would like to see something they offer to, to make it up. For example, I, when I look at the parking, doesn't look like we're going to lose any parking comparing to the approver package. Uh, but the landscaping, uh, we're going to have a little less landscaping because the trash enclosure will stay. Uh, I don't really see space there to add any landscaping along the wall because that's a back out place for, for cars and the trash truck. So I don't, I don't know how that can be solved. And I usually don't, um, with the extent and importance of this change, I don't think that we just want to give it to the staff and work with the landscape architects and they say, you know, just to make up the last landscaping area, you're good. I, I'd prefer to see some, some plan i- in front of us so we can make a determination that the trade off is, is adequate. Um, I, I, I'm usually not in favor of conditioning for a conditioning. It really doesn't it doesn't have any enforcement. Um, it doesn't give the city any, 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 any way to enforce it.
I'm sorry.
That's my comments so far.
Okay.
I may have some to add later.
Jim, if I may, uh, we have.
Let me, uh, I'm sorry, Chris. Uh, let me get Michael in and then I'll go to you, okay? So I think Michael's spoken yet. Michael, did you have, um?
Thanks, thanks, Jim. Uh, yeah, so we could belabor this, but this is what I'm thinking. We could deny this request. Um, I don't, unless staff can tell us otherwise, I don't think the progression of their activities would be impacted by, by this. They can, they just can't get their CFO. That's it. I mean, they can continue to do other improvements or part of their, their permit, just, just to be clear on that. Um, so if we denied it, it would just be a flat denial and the landlord and tenant would have to resolve those issues internally. However, they see fit, uh, as Mal had mentioned, it's really not our, not our, not our issue to deal with, uh, really. Uh, we could, we could continue this, give the applicant a chance to go back, given all of the input that's been provided. Um, and not lose as much time as if they started over again. Go back, revisit the discussion and come back with something, um, that we can look at, you know, staff with some findings. We can get some exhibits. And then consider something real other than, you know, and, and I'm with, uh, Commissioner Crandall and Brown. I, you know, I, I, I definitely want to see this go forward too. Uh, they're, they're a big tenant here in, in town. Um, but, but Jim, to your, to your points, uh, I just can't, I couldn't get behind this as, as it stands right now. Um, you know, crafting language and a condition on a condition. It shows that we care and we want to help them, but we really don't have much to work with. I mean, we need more and a lot of work went into this, into this, uh, project, you know, project numerous times. So that's my thought. I, um, if, if we don't have a solution, uh, then, then I couldn't, I just couldn't support this project to this point.
Um, Commissioner Kozinski.
Yeah, in the past, what we've done, uh, we've gotten to this kind of sticking point is that we've allowed the design review, uh, subcommittee to make the, uh, final approval of any suggested, uh, plans. So if the applicant is willing to come up with a set of plans and then just present it to the design review subcommittee for approval, that might be, uh, sufficient enough to move this project forward a little faster.
Yeah, I would, I would just offer, um, to one point that Commissioner Blackwell made. With this as a condition of occupancy, which it is now, w- w- we cannot proceed. So I, I just wanted to, to clarify that. You, you had mentioned that there's a lot we can do while we work this out, but we, we just, with this uh, condition remaining, uh, we can't, we can't go forward with, with that risk. Um, and, and to Commissioner Kozinski, if, if the commission can get, can allow us to maintain the wall, we will come back to the, to the subcommittee um, and to the commission with a landscape plan for that area. We, what would, what would be beneficial to us is if we can agree, the wall room ma- the wall will remain in place. And the applicant will come back with a landscape plan.
And, and one other thing I like to throw out there, you know, when we were first looking at acquiring the center, you know, the mayor approached us and said, hey, we've been wanting to really see that center upgraded. You know, the facade's redone, it's dated, has, there hasn't been any work with the existing property owner. And we agreed to, to go ahead and do that. That was a voluntary thing that, that we came out and we spent significant amount of money, you know, seven figure money on, on upgrading the center. It was all voluntary. It turned out great. You know, we, there was nothing, nothing for us, you know, past honoring a, you know, a commitment that we said to the mayor that we've will look into re- remodeling and, and updating the facade. We have a vacant restaurant building there that's been chronically vacant for years. You've seen it. Um, it looks terrible. We went through a significant amount of time working with all the subcommittees on this. We, you know, have the, the condition that we'd love to see the wall removed. You're right, it's, it's a landlord problem, but we're really coming to you that it's a, it's a problem for both of us because we can't move forward with it and we need the city's help. And so what we're doing is we're, we're asking for that help. They need to move forward with tearing down that building, spending another, making a significant investment in the community. To redo that and then, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful building and be one of the nicest in our portfolio. Uh, it's an expensive building. And that's what we were prepared to do and that's what we like to do, but we need your, your, your help to do that. And to get this thing moving forward, we just, we have to have that wall condition of approval re- removed. We, we just, there's nothing that we can do right now to move forward. Part of when we looked at this originally is with traffic and so forth, there was no considerations of the impact from, from the, you know, the traffic. Our tenants have been there for a long time. You know, they've been very successful there a long time. Uh, we haven't had issues with anybody. Even Trader Joe's, you know how crowded Trader Joe's gets? Trader Joe's across the, across the board is a very successful, you know, grocer. They have lines, you know, during COVID, we had lines out the door and not only this location, but all of our locations. It was un- unbelievable. But they're, they're a happy tenant there. And if our tenants are not happy, um, you know, commissioners, they'll go find another center to go to. People can't park, they can't get to it, they can't easily get in and out. They, they don't renew their leases, they leave. So we're in this spot here where we'd like to continue with our investment in the center. But we, we need your help to, to do that. And, you know, further, further conditioning and moving it is just, it's, it's creating a real challenge for us for, for moving forward. So we're, we're rat- we're asking that you can move this condition. We, we're committed that we'd love to remove that wall when the opportunity, you know, allows us to do so. But at this time, we just, we can't. So that's, that's where we are and we'd like to, we'd like your support, um, us continuing to be able to move forward.
Commissioner Brown, you've been waiting patiently.
Well, I should have gone on mute, but I, I guess I'm, I'm to the point where, uh, there's no easy solution to this. It's, uh, you know, it's a I got you by the, by the, by the owners and, and their tenant that's not very, uh, very amenable. Significant improvement on the other side with the, uh, with the restaurant. So I guess I would, or like Mr. Crandall conditioning to decouple his condition and leave it in and leave you free to fortify you to work it out. I like the commission to reconsider that. Uh, if we can't come to consensus with that, then let's, let's remove it, go simply. Even, uh, Mal has said the language that, uh, Jonathan put forward was supportable. And, uh, I think we need to keep it simple as, as we can. That's my thought.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Crandall.
Yeah, um, I just do want to say, we, we get hung up on architecture and design, but there is an economic development section of the general co- general plan that, uh, we also have to take into consideration, uh, when we make decisions. And, uh, my whole reason for, I haven't given up on the ramp. And if we can give them four years to resolve it or one year or just some time without the economic impact of stopping their project. Um, that's why I was saying, if we make this phase it out of the original approval as far as building department planning and planning approval, um, that, that means we, the ramp is still a design. It's still a viable part of this project. Um, the, uh, condition of approval only applies if and when that ramp is built. So they can continue on, get their, um, CO and all for the uh, drive-through building. They can satisfy that VC. So there's no problems there. He'll get his CO. They don't have the cost of blaze. Um, I think we've got to be a little more real, real world here, that stubborn. And, um, it's not often we have an applicant who's willing to work with the city like these guys have. And we've seen a huge improvement for the center. And, uh, so I'm.
Let me ask, I, I, I want to understand, maybe I'm misunderstanding something. When you're saying install the ramp, I'm, what, what would this be tied to? But, you know, and for terms of activating, removing the wall, what are you saying that that's tied to?
Okay.
What are your?
They, they have, um, entitlements right now of a site plan and building permits. This ramp is under a separate building permit. Um, and that can be sectioned out and they don't have to pull that permit immediately. Um, so they've got the entitlement to do it. Just alone taking this resolution off doesn't even affect that ramp other than we no longer have, um, the condition of approval. And what I was proposing is if it's taken out in that condition of approval, goes with it. And is a separate item. The building gets built, it's still approved with the ramp. It's still entitled. We still have the right to request it. But, uh, and there can be a condition in there that they can sway, uh, uh, Stater Brothers mind if we need to. Uh, Mal can help us with the wording on something like that. But then we get everything we want.
Uh, well, no, we don't get everything. We, the one thing we don't get is a guarantee of building the ramp, building the, the connection between the two, right?
And even if we deny it, we don't get it. So what have we accomplished?
Well.
I mean, we, we flexed, we flexed our muscles and put the pressure on, but we haven't gotten anything.
It's not a matter of flexing our muscles. It's a matter of bringing it into conformance with modern, the, the kind of these kinds of modern standards that are in our, or, uh, uh, policies that are in our general plan and the other.
And weigh that with economics.
Right, but I don't, I mean, I don't see that in the findings. Not that I don't want, of course I want them to be successful. They, sounds like they are successful, but.
Is that it's, um, uh, in conformance with the general plan.
And also that it's, uh, not unsightly or creates disharmony with its locale and surroundings. I would say a wall there creates disharmony.
But in the middle of a parking lot. And grandfathered in. They don't have to do a thing to it.
Well, it's, yes, it's grandfathered in until such a point, and it's been there for whatever, fifty years or so. And it's grandfathered in like everything else until it comes a time when you review it and you, you say it's time to bring it into conformance. There are, you don't have to do that every year, but there are times when you have to do that. When you look at the site plan, that's one of those times when you have to look at that. So I'm, I don't want to stop them, but the alternatives that I hear are kind of they're kind of surrender. They're kind of saying, I can still make these findings without this, this, um, uh, uh, important condition that we had at the beginning. So I have to ask that, why did we have the condition in the first place, right? So.
Because they agreed to it, not because we. Because they agreed to it, not because we
Well, yeah. We but we wanted the conditions because we felt it was important in terms of the findings that we had to make.
But I don't think
I certainly felt that way. That's why I thought.
I still feel we can't mandate that item. Something we wish for is on our wish list. You can request it, but if they had chosen not to do it, I don't think we could have denied the project.
Chair, can I ask a question to staff?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Jonathan, if we were to continue it and have actually come back with some landscaping plan or other solution to offset the perceived loss because of this war is going to remain. What is the earliest meeting? When when will be the oldest meeting this scheduled?
Want it real bad, you get it that way, real bad.
We would probably have to go through a design review then to find a commission.
Well, and we can waive the desire, we can waive the desire review and just come back to this commission. Jonathan, what is the next meeting that's available to the applicant?
Two weeks from now.
Or Kyle?
Yeah, I believe June 16th is the next meeting.
Well, I have a question for Jonathan, please.
Okay, Roland.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Brown, I have another question. Let me finish that.
All right, yeah. And then Don, I'll go to you.
Another question is, in the past, I've seen that the community director of community development removed a condition of planning commission approval. Can that be done by that director?
So that comes into the the section of our code regarding modifications to approved entitlements. And so there's a tiering, as I'm sure you are all aware, where yes, the city planner can make, can approve some requests. In this case, I consulted with the city planner and with Cecilia, our community development director. And honoring the fact that this was a part of planning commission's discussions at the prior hearing, we felt that it was appropriate to designate that this was something that raised to the level of coming back to planning commission. So so yes, there's some discretion to determine who makes those decisions. And we felt that in this case, it was most appropriate permission to make that decision.
Okay. But but you you will be able to put it in the next meeting or two weeks from now.
So I mean, if if a meeting is continued, it does not require to a date certain, it doesn't require new noticing. So that is something that's a possibility. And I, you know, I defer to the commission to talk through logistically what makes the most sense in this case. It's already been mentioned that there have been times, if this is primarily a concern about landscape in a in a particular area. Then, you know, I I would echo what has been mentioned before, that precedent has been to rely on the design review subcommittee to look at those specific elements. But but that's something that this commission can make a
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah. A couple of things, and then my question to to you, John. First off, we've conditioned in the past allow things to move forward and minor landscape adjustments be accomplished by the concurrence of Pat Murphy and the city plan, in other words, ongoing. So we've conditioned that before, so you don't have to re come back with a landscape plan. I think all Pat Murphy recommended a little plan or somewhere along the wall on one side of it or not, and that could probably be done at his level. And the city planner moving forward, if you wanted to go that direction. And we've done that before many times. My my original question for you, John, you made some, you put some language words together that kind of supported a a position that Bart was trying to get towards, it's good. Condition is so is win-win, so that and giving them four to five years for the touching it. And you put some words together and Mal said, I could support those words. If you repeat those words or the or you have those close by and remember that, you know, you brought up about 30 or 40 minutes ago that that we can decode this and still leave it out there so that you can go work the state of.
Sure. My proposal was instead of removing the condition, when we were discussing this section, instead to add language at the beginning of condition 7.17. So not all of you may have that in front of you, I'll just add that language. So that proposal was to add, the planning commission supports removing the wall that currently divides Plaza by the Sea and Ocean View Plaza. Should the applicant secure consent from their tenant to remove the wall, then the path of travel between Ocean View Plaza and Plaza by the Sea shall be maintained free of obstructions. The applicant shall be responsible and ensure that no boxes, gates, carts, product machinery, et cetera, serving tape connects the two parcels. And that reciprocal pedestrian vehicular access shall be maintained in perpetuity between the adjacent plazas.
Al, you're still pretty comfortable with those words or you had some other time?
Yes, I'm still very comfortable with that. It it simply, it simply pushes pushes the decision or the the action off until the tenant and the landlord can come to a mutual agreement. There's no problem legally with that language.
And Don, everyone else, could we also at the end of that put, if approval by the tenant is not available, the applicant shall resubmit drawings for an alternate landscape plan and any thoughts on that?
Is that a question for Mal?
For everybody.
Oh, sorry.
Well, Jim, I'll go ahead and jump in.
Please.
Okay, you know, I like, I like some of the language that Jonathan has recited. I like some of the language that Art has recited. But, you know, my position pretty much stays the same. Jim, I'm with you on your thoughts. I think they're they're important. There is an opportunity here for the for the landlord to go back to the to the tenant and have another discussion, considering this has been obviously, you know, a heavy topic and I appreciate the instructor discussion that's happening. It's great, this is why we're here. But the SAP report also says that there is a little more than four or five years left in the agreement. And the applicant has stated for the record that the tenant is adamant about that condition not being enforced in in that access being built. Threatening, you know, implied that there's threatened, threat of of legal action of some sort or calling out a breach in the agreement. But, you know, again, there's been ample time to to come back and discuss this and request relief. There's appeal period. You know, there was plenty of time. At this point, there is an option to come back in a couple of weeks with a possible solution that maybe it includes a different kind of access. Maybe, you know, the vehicular piece of it goes away and the applicant has something that we can look at and consider that does allow for some access, but maybe not to the degree that, you know, the commission had approved, you know, granting vehicular access between parcels. Maybe it's just an improved pedestrian access way with some some nice landscape and, you know, we call it a day. I'm not saying that's what we would approve at this point because we don't have it in front of us, nor do we have any, you know, expressed willingness from the from the landlord to do so. But if the landlord was willing to take some time, at least ask again, revisit this and then come back to us in two weeks and we'd have more information to base a decision on. That 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 would be my thoughts on this. That's all I have, Jim.
And and for me, just to respond, you know, quickly, because I I think I've I've beat on this one enough. The, I I mean, I appreciate, I I think what you're asking for is as far as we can get given what the applicant is telling us, but the bottom line is is that it doesn't it doesn't guarantee us. In fact, I think it's likely that we still will have the wall there, given that it really depends on the one of the tenants, this particular tenant of the applicant. And it's, you know, for all the reasons that I've I won't, you know, bore you with what I've already said, but for all of those reasons, you know, I just don't, for me, it's not quite enough. Because it in all likelihood, the wall is simply going to remain there. So you know, that's my, that's my feeling about it.
At least 10 more years, yeah.
Commissioner Wu, did you have something?
Yeah, you either use an existing condition as a baseline, then you have to go through the process again, or you use the the CUP you already have as a baseline. Then we're looking at a trade-off situation. So I would like to make a motion that this item come back in two weeks. If the applicant is not ready in two weeks, we continue it again. We want to see some landscape including but not limited to landscape playing to to provide some benefit concerning the the loss because of the war issue.
Motion by Commissioner Wu, is there a second?
I can second that. But before we do that, set it up for a vote, can we at least ask the applicant if they'd be willing to to do this? If they'd be willing to go back to their tenant and revisit this?
You know, Commissioner, we've we've had some, you know, extensive communications and conversations in regards to this. It's it's my belief at this time that that their position has been that isn't going to change at this point. So I I don't feel that another two weeks or talking to, we'll we'll change that, the position.
And that's really why we're here. We exhausted our efforts. We did, we did everything we could before asking you for help here.
We we understand it, given the fact that you have, you you engage with attorneys to talk about it. It's a wishful thinking that the tenant will change their position. But we want to see some some design effort from you, come back, show us some solution.
We're we're happy to do that and and we'll work with you on a design, on a landscape design for that area. But I would just ask that we 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 insert the language that has been discussed so that we can proceed. And and we can, and you can, I don't know how you do this in the in the language or just the requirement that we go through the the subcommittee for the landscape plan, which we're happy to do.
We only did a once that the planning commission approved something at the same time delegate the design review subcommittee to approve some revision as a condition. And then you might be a point that didn't go very well. And so and that's that's not normal and that's that that's rare. That's a rarity and I'm not for that.
And I I would suggest that we we work directly with staff and we can, you know, we can have that that resolved at that level.
But, yeah, the the motion and then the second, unless we have a substitute motion.
And and Jim, when is it appropriate to offer an alternate motion? After the vote or before?
I believe you can alter, you can offer an alternate motion right now if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. That that's correct. A substitute motion would happen right now.
Okay, I would like to enter an alternate motion that we adopt a change to the condition of approval with the verbiage that Jonathan has given. Altering, changing the resolution and at the end of a solution cannot be made with the existing tenant. The applicant will go through the design process and submit an alternate design for the wall area.
So we have an alternate motion from Crandall, seconded by Brown. What I have here, just to make sure I got this right, the initial motion from Wu and seconded by Blackwell was to continue this and come back in two weeks with a solution for both the landscaping and and general flow, I guess. I've said it's your motion, so tell me if I'm wrong. And the alternate motion from Crandall, seconded by Brown, is to change the condition of approval to Jonathan's text and approve the motion. Do I have those two right? What was the end of your motion? I I didn't quite hear that. I beg your pardon? What was the end, the the last verbiage of the motion? There was something else.
Yes, if if in fact they can't, if the applicant cannot obtain approval by the descending tenant, they will go through the entire process and resubmit the area for review by the planning department, which would come through design review, come through planning commission, et cetera, for a new landscape and ramp and pedestrian.
So so let me understand what then kind of that Bart, that last section that you just described. You're saying that if they go back again to their tenant and the tenant says, no, we don't want the wall, then they have to come back for approval on removing the wall?
No, or redesigning the wall area.
Approval for redesigning the wall area. So keep, so either they get approval or they come back with a design for the wall area that has to be approved.
Correct.
Okay. So and staff or Mal, you're going to have to give me a little guidance because I don't think I've ever done an alternate motion. We've got the main all motion, the alternate motion. Do we vote on them as competing things? Do we vote on one first and then the other?
Yes, Chair, Chair Rulin. So the substitute motion was the latest motion made, that's voted on first. If that passes, that's what happens. If it fails, then you move to the first motion that was made.
Okay, then I will call the roll on that second motion that this is Commissioner Crandall's motion. We're voting on that motion now. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
No.
Commissioner Blackwell?
No.
And Rulin votes no, it's six to six, so the motion fails. So we'll vote on the first motion, which is Commissioner Wu's. It's three to three, right? So that so it fails. Pardon me?
You said six to six.
Oh, I I apologize, it's three to three. Now we vote on Commissioner Wu's motion. Commissioner Crandall?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Kozinski?
No.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rulin votes no, the measure fails two to four. So here we are.
You have no motion.
Chair Rulin, you voted no.
I voted no on both motions, correct.
So you did not support Commissioner Wu's motion, so it failed.
That's correct.
Both motions failed and there's no action.
It failed two to four, yeah.
No.
Two, two voted in favor, four voted against Commissioner Wu's motion. So did I get the count wrong? Commissioner Wu and Commissioner Blackwell, Blackwell voted aye and everyone else voted no, correct?
Yeah, you're you're correct. Both motions failed.
Right, yeah. So we can open it up for further discussion and clarification and another motion.
Yes.
So Jim, I have a question for you. What what is it that you struggle with on on both those past motions?
What I struggle with is that in the first motion, I don't think that there's any chance of the wall being removed. I think that, 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 I think that that is going to have the same effect as simply accepting what's, what's here.
Could I just interject on that just briefly? I, I would say that we as the owner would, we've committed to removing the wall. We are going to use our commercially best efforts to do that. We've spent a lot of money designing it, redesigning it and re-presenting it. We are going to make our best efforts. We just can't, we just cannot be held, uh, hold a certificate of occupancy on it because we, we, we ultimately don't, aren't the only one at that location who can decide if it can be removed. But we've demonstrated our commitment to what Commissioner Crandall has offered. We, we have, we, we've demonstrated it a number of times because we first came in with a design and then enhanced the design and came back to you with something we liked better. We're doing our absolute best here.
Yes, and, and let me, and let me say for the record, I have no doubts about that. You know, I've dealt, I've been doing this for almost 10 years.
There should be, there should be no doubts about our commitment to, to working through this. We're, we're, we're going to do our best and, and, and Commissioner Crandall's offering is what a, a retail landlord needs in this environment. We, we've somehow survived the pandemic and we have executed leases which are extremely valuable and we're going to.
So Kyle, I have a question for you. How long is the Sater Brothers lease?
That's confidential, you know, I, I, I don't know that I can, that I can.
I think it's in the back of the, twenty forty-five.
So let me, let me ask, I, I mean, I, you know, because I, I do want to resolve this for the applicant if we all can. Uh, take, take Bart's motion for, for example. At some point, the clock's going to run out on that, correct? Like after three years or something? Mal, maybe you can, you can help with this? Does the clock run out on Commissioner?
Uh, the resolution has a standard condition of approval early on um, that allows for three years for the entitlement uh, to be developed. And then you can submit for an extension for an additional two years.
Right, two years, so five years, let's say, on the outside. And the current tenant, their lease may last for longer than that. We don't, we don't know how long, but it could be for longer than five years. So, pardon me?
It stays right in the briefing table, I think it's good till twenty forty-five.
So, yeah, so that, and, and the only effect if they don't, if they aren't able to complete this is that they just lose their entitlement to tear down the wall. Um, I'm just trying to see if there's a way we could extend it or.
Do it, they got to start the process over again, trying to give them any flexibility for the next five years.
We say there is no, yeah, there is no option to just leave it. They, if they're going to leave it, they've got to come back to us with a new design that we approve. That's the last sentence.
Right, if they don't do it, then there, then there's a new design that has to go into the wall. But that's, that's all we get is a new design.
But, but what they've said, it doesn't look, it doesn't sound likely that this will happen until twenty forty-five. At least, um, the opportunity for them to remove the wall. Because Sater Brothers may not ever approve.
Most likely, we, we don't need to pretend that it's going to happen. We just have to accept almost the fact that this wall will stay for a very long time. So our decision should have based on that assumption now.
Correct. I agree.
And if, I believe the applicant had a desire to remove the wall for, for everybody's benefit. But they can always come back for a new application just to remove the wall and improve that corridor. It's, it can be a separate deal.
Well, let me, let me, you know, we're kind of well and truly stuck, which I don't like and doesn't do anyone any good.
Uh, Jim, I got an idea.
I, well, okay, yeah, let me hear your idea.
Would you be more comfortable if we gave them a limit on how long they could wait? Let's say one year to get Sater Brothers approval? And then if not, they've got to submit for a complete redesign of the wall area?
Well, I think we're already say, I, yes, I think that there, there should be a limit. If, if they can't get approval in X amount of time, then they have to get the wall. And maybe that should be short because they've already stated that they've made, uh, you know, a very good faith effort to, to get that approval. So I would even say less than a year. I'm actually more concerned of, if, if one day, someday, this is going to happen and if, if Sater Brothers is there for the next 20 years, but they'll have a maximum of five years of, of entitlement, is it going to happen? But, you know, quite honestly, I, I mean, you know, we can't leave the applicant in a, in a, in, in kind of a purgatory state, you know, where nothing's happening. So, um, this is what I'm going to say. I'm, I'm not, I'm not entirely happy with this because I think, you know, I think we're kind of giving up on something, but at least there's some, some small sliver of hope that we could get what we, you know, properly conditioned. I, on, on Bart's motion, I will change my vote to aye. Um, I don't know, Mal, do we have to revote on that? Um, re, uh, or can I just change my vote?
Technically, we should do a motion to reconsider first, um, which then allows us to re-vote. Where that gets difficult is that a motion to reconsider can only be brought by somebody who is in the majority on the vote and there was no majority. So what we should do procedurally is have Bart remake the motion. He can simply say, I'll remake the same motion I made before. Whoever seconded it can second it, we re-vote on it. I mean, you could just say I changed my vote, but technically we should go through it again.
That's fine. So Bart, if you'll remake your motion.
I will remake my motion as originally made.
So a motion by, um, Crandall, seconded by Brown, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Woo?
No.
Commissioner Blackwell?
No.
And Rulyn votes aye. So the measure passed, so I wish you the best of luck. I'm sorry you're in this position. And I will, and as you can imagine, I will urge you to do whatever you can do in the coming years to see that this happens. I think it would be a great benefit to the community if you did, so thank you.
We do as well. We're long-term owners, we want to be great partners with the city and we will be.
Yep, yeah.
We really appreciate it, thank you.
Wait a minute, we're not done yet, right?
No, that was the motion, right? Oh, but we voted on, I'm sorry, that we, we voted on the condition, that was, that was about.
That's the resolution as condition or is that just a condition?
That was the conditions, we didn't make the resolution, do we need to do that as well? Because the resolution was about the condition. Mal?
Yes, I'm checking, I'm checking the recommended actions right now.
You can make the resolution and then, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, yes, so, so what you'd want to do is adopt or adopt staff's recommendation, which, which is twofold. First is the sequel recommendation. The second is approving the resolution, striking, uh, condition seven point one seven, but you would strike it pursuant to the language that was proposed by Bart earlier. Does that make sense?
Okay, I think so. What, why don't I, why don't I try it? And if I get it wrong, you can tell me, oh, I got it wrong now. So I'll move, we adopt resolution number PC twenty-one dash zero zero nine, a resolution to planning commission in the city of San Clemente, California, approving site plan amendment twenty-one dash zero seven eight, modifying the previously approved site plan permit nineteen dash two oh three for Plaza by the Sea Drive Thru, a request to remove condition of approval seven point seventeen from PC resolution twenty dash zero zero eight, which required reciprocal pedestrian and vehicular access between Plaza by the Sea and the adjacent Ocean View Plaza as part of the previously approved project to develop a new single-story drive-through commercial building at Plaza by the Sea, six ten dash six twenty-eight, Camino de los Maras, as modified by a vote as proposed by Commissioner Crandall.
Perfect, that's correct.
Motion by Rulyn, seconded by Crandall, I will call the roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Woo?
No.
Commissioner Blackwell?
No.
Commissioner Rulyn votes aye, passes four to two. All right, good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you.
And we will move on to, back to my agenda here. Item nine is new business, we have none. Ten is old business, we have none. Uh, item eleven, reports of commissioners and staff. Um, the staff or any of the commissioners have anything to report? Right, I'm seeing nothing. Um, I will mention two things that I think, uh, I, I want to bring um, to staff and the commission's attention. One is, um, I had brought this up earlier, but it might have fallen through the cracks or it was looked into or, you know, I haven't heard back, maybe because Gabriel, um, has moved on to greener pastures. But I, I have pointed out there is that there's a fence, um, at Camino Capistrano, not Camino Capistrano, sorry, Capistrano Shores has a fence at the south end of their property. And that road that goes down there, there, there's a, that, I can't remember the name of that road, but it's that, that Capistrano Shores Road for the trailer parks. The north part of that road, that short bit of the north part is, um, public property now and per, uh, per an agreement that we came to with Capo Shores, I don't know, a year or two ago. And, but at the very end of that is a fence. And that fence has always been there, presumably Capo Shores did it. And then there's public beach, city beach on the other side of it. So it's public right-of-way owned by the city and then city beach. And that's blocked by what, what is, I assume, is a, um, uh, is a private fence owned by Capistrano Shores that has always been there and wasn't removed, I assume, when this agreement was made. So I know I'm waving my hands, I don't have a map in front of me to show you. But, um, but yeah, it seems to me if that's the case, if my, if my understanding is correct, that fence shouldn't be there. It's a private fence blocking public access and public property.
Yeah, I would think that would be, have to be raised to the coastal commission.
Yeah, thank you Chair Rulyn, I will look into that. Um, I actually believe that that is not public access. I believe that that is coastal access, but it's private coastal access. I'll have to refer to, um, our coastal land use plan, which has these areas mapped. Um, but.
The, I'm sorry to interrupt, the coastal land use plan does call it private of beach access. But since that coastal land use plan was created, we came to an agreement with Capistrano Shores that the planning commission voted on, where that, that, that one end of the street, that short south end of that street is public, a public right-of-way, public property. So as I understand it, that, that document is now obsolete. And that map on the document is obsolete.
Well, I will, um, look into that with, um, engineering. I, I, I do recall there was an agreement with Capistrano Shores and it had to do with, um, accessing, um, the, the property, um, both by the city and Capistrano Shores. I think the city maintains an access easement for, um, beach maintenance purposes. Um, but I'll look into that and report back to, um, the planning commission.
Okay, all right, that, that, yeah, that would be great. And actually, if they do have an access for beach maintenance, uh, unisement for that, they still don't have access because there's still a fence in terms of getting to the beach from, from that street. So, and yeah, and there is a sign there that says no trespassing on that whole area. So I think on the north part, yes, no trespassing, but the south part, if that's supposed to be accessed. My understanding or my recollection when we, when we, when we voted on that was that that was city property or at least the middle of that road was city property. And if I'm mistaken, that's fine, but I wanted to bring that up in case there should be a fence removed.
Yeah, I, I believe that's. I, I believe that's access controlled by, um, our public works department to have the access to the covert.
Okay, all right, so I'll leave it to you to, to look into, but that was, that was something that I had noticed. The other thing was something that came up actually with, with, um, you know, when I was looking into something with my property and my small HOA. Um, and that is landscaping requirements or landscaping ordinance. And this may be a change we want to look at in our landscaping ordinance. If you look at it, it says that for, it, it has, uh, you know, fifty, you need fifty percent landscaping for a single-family home in the front yard setback. And in multifamily homes, you need a hundred percent landscaping except for driveways or required walkways. And it says it has to be all organic material and there has to be a certain number of trees. I think it's one tree per twenty millimeter feet or something like that. So we have all these requirements. And in some conversation with Gabriel, when you, when you look at that, it says, here's when you need to bring this into conformance. And it has things like when you change fifty percent of the building and kind of the, the standard non-conforming things that you, you would expect to see. But what it doesn't say is, is what if you're changing the landscaping itself? The building is the same, but now you make a change or redo your landscaping in the front yard setback. And the ordinance is silence on it, silent on it. And the problem is, is it leaves an ambiguity in the ordinance that says, well, I can follow all the rules, I can get my approvals for my building and my landscape plan. I put down my landscaping, now, the day after I get my permit signed off, I can tear out all the landscaping and do whatever I want there, which I think is, is probably antithetical to the, at least to the intent of the ordinance. Um, so it comes, it brings up the question of is, well, if I'm actually changing my landscaping or if I want to do something else in my front yard setback, like put down concrete, you know, where do I go? Who, who, who checks that out? And right now, you know, I, at least what I got from Gabriel and I, you know, I, I, it just didn't sit right with me. It was, um, you can, you can do whatever you want. But it just, that seems to me a lead a gaping hole in terms of our, our zoning ordinance. So I'd ask that staff maybe take a look at that. Perhaps we can do a, um, just to, to fill it quickly, we could do a, a, um, an interpretation. Or, you know, just, you know, next time we change the zoning ordinance is tighten that up to, to indicate so that we don't start losing landscaping because people find out that there's a trick to getting away from doing the landscaping that the city requires.
Okay, uh, we'll take a look at that, thank you.
Okay, that's all I had, anyone have anything else?
One, one comment, Jim, I just wanted to apologize for interrupting, uh, your time on the mic there and didn't mean to interrupt. I was, uh, overly excited. So thank you, and you, you ran a great meeting and commend.
Well, thank you. And, and usually if you get excited and interrupt about something, you usually have a very good reason to do it. So you do it less than anyone else. So thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate that though. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion for a German.
I move we turn to the next regular meeting of the planning commission, which will be held on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at six PM via telecon.
It's a motion by Brown and a second by Commissioner Kozinski. I will call the roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Woo?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Rulyn votes aye, passes.